Welcome to the September the 11th Board of Commissioners meeting. Glad to see the participation here and all the friendly faces. From personal level, I've had some struggles and it's been so rewarding just to receive cards and, you know, feelings of get well soon and this type of thing. And I want you to know how much I appreciate all of you and it is wonderful to be back out again out of that bed. Okay, we're going to start off with the invocation led by Steve Jarvis, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our dear blessed heavenly father, we want to thank you for the day that you have given us. We want to thank you for the level of support that you've given Steve throughout this time. We thank you for having him back. We pray that you would continue to heal and help with the healing process. Help us here tonight to do your will and your way for the citizens of Davidson County. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Praying to pull the chair up from my table.
Thank you. And my, my back hurt too bad for that.
Thank you for here. Okay, um, we're going to do recognition. Is David King from Thomasville Chamber here? Okay, Madam Clerk, do you see any other folks that we need to recognize here? Obviously, we've got a school board superintendent, one of our school board members, Alan Beck, and Amy Lyle. Got Mr. Montsinger, Neil Montsinger.
Kristy Bonnet.
Kristy. Kristy, where's Kristy? Ah, she is, okay. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Registered for public address, if you haven't registered and you want to speak at public address, please register. Okay, adoption of agenda. I have requested that an update on Hurricane Florence be added as an agenda item 10E. Are there any other changes for the agenda? If not, can I have a motion and a second?
The chairman will make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
A motion by Commissioner Trolle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Croft. Cast your vote.
And that motion carries seven zero.
Okay, um, anyone registered? Barney W. Hill, you want to take it back?
Delete the electronic notification bill from your list of legislative goals. There is more to this issue than just saving money. It all began as a scheme by State Senator Trudy Wade to punish the newspapers in her district for disagreeing with her. But Trudy Wade, being Trudy Wade, she figured she might as well punish all the newspapers in the state while she was at it. She received so much resistance from both sides of the aisle that she had to cut the bill back to just Guilford County. Now you want to join the movement to expand that bill again. The newspapers were foolish to become so dependent on legal notices. If losing that cash cow means bankruptcy for all of them, it will serve them right. But it is the collateral damage that worries me. If the government obtains a monopoly on notification, the government may conveniently forget to include items that embarrass the government. No notification at all would be better than a government monopoly on notification. Mrs. Harris reported that legal notices cost as much as $25,000 a year. But you should have asked her how much of that consists of zoning and grants. There is no state or federal mandate that you have a zoning ordinance. There is no state or federal mandate that you have to chase grants. There is no state or federal mandate that you have to become a tool of Trudy Wade's vendetta. And come to think of it, abolishing the planning department alone would save $446,850 a
Thank you, Mr. Hill. And we'll move on to the public hearings. We have a public hearing, Cap Projects Combined Capital Transportation Grant Application. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition Okay, seeing none, is... Oh, we got, okay, oh, here we go. Thank you, Doug.
On disability, and I allow them transportation buses for all my needs, basically. Doctor formers, other formers everywhere else, I ask y'all to keep the bus system intact. Thank you.
Do I have your name?
Sir.
Sir.
If you would, please give your name so we, so we have that for the public record.
Gerald Hargrave.
Gerald Hargrave, is that correct? Thank you, Mr. Hargrave.
Mr. Chairman, before anybody else comes up, this is a public hearing for 5310 monies and 5311.
My name is Mary Garbutt.
Okay.
And we need the buses. Uh, I'm not handicapped, but I ride the bus. Y'all drive, I ride the bus, doctors, sometimes shopping to the senior services. And without that, I'll be stuck in the house or I couldn't visit the doctors. I'm being nice tonight, even. But we do need the buses, no joke. It's not a joke. It's something that we actually need. And, and to take it away from us, that's crazy. Y'all got cars, family got cars, I don't have no car. I'm from New York, we rode buses, trains, and taxis. Y'all ain't got none of that. So, please, don't take our buses.
Did you get her name, Madam Clerk?
Mary E. Garbutt.
Thank you, Ms. Garbutt.
G-A-R-G-B-U-T-T.
As, as pointed out by Commissioner Trolle, this is the 5310, 5311 grant.
Line for those funds.
Thank you, Commissioner Trolle. Okay, is there any others? Okay. Okay, can I have a motion second to close the public... Oh, you got, oh Barney, okay.
Well, while Barney's coming up here, uh, I agree that, you know, New York, they do ride buses a lot, but also down here in North Carolina, our taxes are a whole lot lower. So, just a point of clarification.
Buses a little cheaper, too.
Yeah, they can't ride that to the doctor, though.
Ms. Hill?
5310, 5311, and 5339, combined capital. Couple of questions. Does the presence of item nine foxtrot on tonight's consent agenda indicate that there will be no public hearing on the ROAP? There used to be a public hearing on the community transportation program, which is what we're talking about tonight, and another public hearing on the ROAP. The RAP, ROAP was for operating, the CTP was for capital. The CTP then always was a 5311. The CTP application on the table tonight uses up 85 sheets of paper, but does little except repeat itself. The 5311 is so intertwined with a 5310 and a 5339 that it is a challenge to tell which is which. And you, you recently had the, uh, the documents you would need to accept the public, accept the grant that you approved last September under this same heading, and it ran 66 pages. I, I was holding back tonight because I was hoping you would get, uh, the same number of people you had to speak in favor of it last year, which was three, but you're down to two this year. And I don't think, I don't think that it's convenient for an individual is, is a sufficient argument to impose the program on the entire county. The lady last year, one of three, who claimed to be representing the quote, "seniors" unquote, said basically what the lady said tonight, that they need... That they need their buses because there is no other transportation available. Wouldn't it be tragic if no other transportation is available because the buses are? And the only way you can do your due diligence to test that premise is to reject the grant one year. Then you could answer questions like, how, since you have that lag on the, on the, on the program, how long would it be before the buses actually stopped rolling? When would you, uh, would you, would you, would they be repossessed? Or would you, um, be able to sell them? Would you be able to use that space over there for something like Mr. Shipwash's perceived The only way you can do your due diligence is to, to test it, and you should not be able in good conscience to, uh, to do the easy thing and, and extend the program instead of saying, in the, in the vote, if you had a void, would what fueled the void by the market be something superior to what you have now? Let the record reflect that I have spoken against this application for the 18th consecutive year.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of or opposed? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion second to close the public hearing?
We can do that verbally. I'm sorry if I didn't change that, you can just close the public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion. A second?
I'll say it.
Okay. And all in favor?
All in.
Okay.
Discussion.
All right, any other discussion?
What is, what is the match on the 5310, 5311? Has it increased or did it come back to the original state?
The 5311 is a 15% match. The 5310 purchase, purchase of services is an 80-10-10, so we have a 10% match for that one. The combined capital is also an 80-10-10 for the new bus replacement.
So, there was, there was nothing that was a 50% match?
There is. The 5307 operating grants that we receive from the High Point MPO for Thomasville and soon to start receiving from the Winston MPO is a 50% match for those operating funds. There's a 5310 operating grant that we don't apply for, um, that's a 50-50 grant. And that was the one that the state was asking us to fill out or complete last year, but then realized it was for senior services, so it went back to the 80-10-10.
The, the 50-50 that we are applying for in this grant, what is the county's match?
Which one? I'm sorry?
They're, one's 15, one's 10, the other one's 10.
So, we do not have a 50-50?
No, not in this, not in this, this group here. And, uh, Mr. Hill asked about the, the, the rope grant. The state no longer requires a public hearing for that particular grant. That's why we're not having one.
So, we match 15% or this, or they match 15%?
We, our, our local match is 15% for the 5311 administrative grant.
Okay. Is that, is that part of the transportation program for the workshop? Part of that increase?
No, no, sir, not for the workshop.
And, and I'm hearing about senior services. Is this part of the senior services stuff or is this just generalized transportation?
The 5310 purchase service is the senior services grant, and the, the state allows us to combine the public hearings into one.
Okay.
Okay, any, anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in favor of the, of approving the grant. I've worked with, um, not only the seniors, but Medicare and Medicaid folks for a long time. They do not have any other means of transportation at all to get to and from. This is for scheduled and unscheduled appointments. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, I mean, you know, some of them can't get to the doctor and that we don't have the transportation to get them there. One of the things that we're charged with as, as citizens is the welfare of our people. And I think the transportation certainly provides a welfare of the people who can't really function or take care of themselves. So, I'd like to come out in favor of that.
Um, I want to thank you for working with the epilepsy group.
Yes, sir.
And helping facilitate that. They have been not connecting the dots.
Right.
But, uh, I'll, I'll vote for it, um, in favor of keeping that going for them.
Is that a motion, Commissioner McClure?
I'll make that motion.
Is that a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner McClure, second by Commissioner Croft.
You want that on the clicker?
Yes, sir.
Anything else for me?
Thank you.
Commissioner Croft, could I have your vote, please?
I voted one time.
Thank you, it's in. All the votes are in? And that motion carries seven zero.
Okay, next on agenda, we have a rezoning request for Robert B. in Misty Barrier in Midway Township containing 3.07 acres from RA3 to HC. I declare the public hearing open, Guy.
Okay, just for the record, you do have a request by Robert Brent in Misty Barrier of the Barrier Investment Group LLC who are requesting to rezone 3.07 acres, more or less, in the Midway Township, tax map 23, and being lots 90, 91, and a portion of 92. You see that highlighted and crosshatched on your zoning map in this area in here. The properties are located on the west side of Old US Highway 52, approximately 380 feet north of the Zimmerman Road intersection. The address of the properties is 8111 Old US Highway 52. The rezoning is requested to change from that of RA3 Rural Agricultural District to that of HC Highway Commercial District. The barriers are here tonight. Just to get you acclimated, I'm sure my, all of you are familiar with this, but this is Enterprise Road here, and we have some commercial service centers here with the restaurants and the sheets. Across the, from this location is the Welcome Business Center, and that's Atrium Windows, which is one of our largest employers in the county. And this is the railroad corridor for Winston-Salem, uh, Southbound Railroad. But, and then we do have another commercial area down here on the south side of Zimmerman Road.
Over Lacy Mill.
Yes, yes, sir.
And there are retired employees back there, too.
But if you'd like to hear from the barriers.
Okay, Mr. Berry, Mr. Berry?
Thank you, guys. So, as he summed up, we are requesting that the land purchased by Barrier Investment Group be rezoned for commercial purposes. We're the owners of Carolina Custom Transportation. We started the company in 2013 with just two vans, one my husband drove and one I drove. We continue to serve the members of the community. We were employed initially by Steve Swaim with the Davidson County Public Services Department. Slowly, we were able to bid on RFP, and we have continued to grow and expand our company. We have a fleet of 14 vans now. We have 10 employees, 12 count, my husband and myself. All of the services we provide, 90% of them are to the residents within Davidson County. They are for Davidson County Medicaid Department, Davidson County Public Services, which Richard is over. And also related to the, um, funding you just got, you guys just voted on, which would be the senior services, probably 5% of our, um, clients are senior services. So, those funds, that sheet that they get for that are what pay us to pick those residents up within the community. Being able to put our business on this land allows us to be able to have an area that we can grow the business, that we can do minor maintenance on the vans, human resource department, places where we can do conferences to continue to do education and training for our employees, allows for a lot of expansion. It's right off of, of course, Old 52 and New 52, so it puts us in great proximity, taking residents inside the county as well as residents that have to go outside the county to Baptist for treatments, to Duke. It just puts us in a great proximity. As I said before, the, all of the, um, people that work for our company are residents of Davidson County, except one who is a veteran that lives in Pinnacle. But it will continue to allow us to keep the revenue inside the county, serve the residents of the county, and, um, jobs for our current employees as well as more as we continue to grow.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right. Is there, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Barney W. Hill?
This would be the relocation of an already thriving established business. That relocation to the area of Old Highway 52 proposed would promote the clustering called for by policy 5.5. The efforts of the nonprofit quasi-governmental rescue squads to relieve EMS of the distraction of providing non-emergency transportation have fallen short. A profit-seeking enterprise like this one is more likely to succeed. The applicant should disregard Mr. Cornman's advice about pursuing grants. You commissioners have demonstrated that dependence on grants is a recipe for stagnation. Let the relocation proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of or against? Mr. Cornman, what is staff recommendation?
The staff concurs with the resolution of consistency that was adopted by the Planning Board on August the 21st, but for obvious reasons, you can see that it's in a growth, commercial growth corridor, and at this time, we recommend approval.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, I would like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Uh, let's see, that's, that's, we've got to close the public hearing first. Let's see, is there any further discussion in, okay. I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Jarv, Commissioner Jarvis has a motion to approve it based upon the consistency agreement. Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Uh, Commissioner Yates, we cast your vote.
All the votes are in?
I wish all of them was this easy.
And that motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Good luck.
So, now you can get started building.
Okay, I have a rezoning request by Margaret and Jean Lashley, Starlight Properties LLC in Lexington Township containing 4.96 acres from RS to RM1. I declare the public hearing open. Guy, if you'll read the F case.
Yes, sir. You do have a request by Margaret and Jean Lashley of Starlight Properties LLC to rezone 4.96 acres, more or less, from the, in Lexington Township, tax map 329, being lots 20B, 20C, 20D, and 20E that are highlighted in yellow on your zoning map there. The address of this area is 580 John Snyder Road. It's located on the northwest side of John Snyder Road, approximately a quarter mile east of the railroad intersection. Rezoning is requested changed from RS, Low Intensity Residential District, to RM1, Medium Density Residential District. The Lashleys are here tonight, if you'd like to hear what their plans are for this property.
Okay, Mr. and Ms. Lashley?
The plans are, we already have a duplex on 20C. We would like to build a couple duplexes beside, and it would be your new campus-style housing that just passed through the planning. It'd be all on that one piece property. It would match the zoning across the street on 20F that Mom and Dad own also, and they live at 20 and on 19 also. So, we own the property around. The duplex has been there 30 years.
Easy access from, from the road, from that curve there?
Yes.
Commodite?
Yes. It'll actually be better. It'll come in at 20B, go down, you see the road coming by 20D, and then behind, or to the left side of 20D is also a roadbed.
Okay.
Yeah, there, and then behind it and out on, on John Snyder again.
Okay. And the board have any questions for Mr. and Ms. Lashley?
Ms. Lashley, could I have your first name, please?
Margaret.
No.
Gina.
G-I-N-A-J-E-A-N-A. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. and Ms. Lashley. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition? Barney W. Hill?
What Scott Leonard told the Planning Board about this request added a new word to my vocabulary, "defragmented." According to the Planning Board minutes, he quote, "explained that the RM1 defragmented what the county used to do with duplexes. Doing it this way makes the property owner committed to taking care of and maintaining all of the duplexes together." That sounds positive. Policy 6.10 says that it is possible to achieve harmony by allowing diversity of housing types, that is. I like that concept. It is in the nature of duplexes to duplicate. Don't let it be said that you hindered them from doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Okay, Mr. Cornman, what is staff recommendation?
The staff is going to recommend approval, Mr. Chairman, based on the land development plan. And I would just tell the board that the applicants are taking advantage of the amendment that the board had previously done to allow campus-style duplexes in an RM1 district. And as they've already pointed out, they already have one duplex out there, so we feel like it's in harmony with the housing in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Cornman. Is there any further discussion by the board?
The Plan, Plan Board was...
Recommended approval.
By, by those?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I make a motion? We approve.
I declare the public hearing closed. Have a motion by Commissioner McClure to approve. I declare the public hearing closed. Have a motion by Commissioner McClure to approve. Do I have a second? Second. Have a second by Commissioner Barrett. Cast your vote. And.
Sure.
Absolutely.
You didn't hear that?
Correct, Commissioner McClure.
Pretty much goes without saying, huh? I'm just curious, have we approved him without doing that?
Never.
That would be wrong.
Do what?
That would be wrong.
I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miss Lashley.
Appreciate it.
That was approved. Okay. Are there any items for decision information consent? Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull nine E for clarification.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the remainder of the consent.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the remainder, absent nine E. Do I have a second? I've got a second. Cast your vote. Commissioner Yates?
Yes.
I'd like your staff to explain to me. I see we've got three applicants here. One of them's Brown Summit. One of them's Winston Salem. I'm not so sure for the Transportation Advisory Board if that Winston Salem's in Davidson County or not. But I know Brown Summit's not, so I just wanted clarification why we got somebody so far away sitting on.
Mr. Jones, do you want to come up and explain why these folks have applied and why sometimes they live out of the county? This is the appointments of Transportation Advisory Board. We've got David Stevens, Andrew Lemmon.
Is there Winston Salem in, in Davidson County?
That I'm not sure. A couple of them I think are to fill certain positions for the Transportation Advisory Board.
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Stevens owns and operates the Providence Transportation, which is one of our third-party contractors. The Public Transportation Division of NCDOT has put new requirements on our TAB, our Transportation Advisory Board, on the makeup of that board. And in moving forward and, and meeting their requirements, we're expanding how many people on that.
Does that requirement make you put a haul, or put a transporter on there?
Yes.
So, they require that you put a transporter?
If we, if we use third-party contractor, it recommends that we have a third-party contractor on there, yes. But his business is in Thomasville.
That almost seems like a conflict of interest there, but.
Well, there, there would be votes that he would have to excuse, recuse himself. It's just like an MPO meeting where they start out with a conflict of interest kind of statement. So, yes, he would have to make that.
Did you ever?
And it was, he'd get concerned, him too, that it would be a conflict.
Did you ever ask Mr. Berry, since he's a transporter, I mean, he was here tonight?
Right, he's in the same, he's one of our third-party contractors, the same. Mr. Stevens is already coming to the meetings.
Okay.
As a, as a resident, and it was just a kind of a natural conversation that he gets the majority of our third-party contract business between Medicaid, Public Services, and Senior Services. So, that's why he was, first, he would serve like a, a two-year term and then rotate off, and then we'd go to another third-party contractor.
Didn't we have a problem with that contractor at one time about insurance? Wasn't there an issue?
With Providence? Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, I was, I was thinking we had an issue with them for some reason, okay.
How many applicants did you have?
The Transportation Advisory Board.
For these positions?
See, one was approved last time. She represented for the Health Department. Yeah, one of the applicants represents the Workshop of Davidson. She's taking Mike's position.
One of the, one of the assistant directors.
Right.
Okay, is she on the, the TAB board now?
No, she is not, and.
She's on here.
Oh, yeah, she's one of the applicants here.
Yes.
So, you decided for the three, absent any from Davidson County? Do you have any applicants from Davidson County that don't want to be on the TAB board?
Well, I wasn't aware that Mr. Stevens wasn't a Davidson County resident. I just know his business is here. He spends most of his day here. Carl represents the workshop.
She lives in Lexington. You got one from Winston Salem. I don't know if that's Davidson County. You got one all the way from Brown Summit.
I do like the fact that he has a business in Thomasville, but I, I have a question, too, as far as conflict, if he's a contractor, if he's one of the subcontractors.
Yeah, this, any of our third-party contractor would have that same conflict, and they would have to, they'd have to recuse themselves.
So, you're saying the state requires you to have a transporter on your board, on the board?
There's different categories that we're required to, to meet, and one of the categories includes third-party contractors in that list.
Third-party contractors, are any kind of contractors that are transporter?
Technically, it'd be any third-party contractor that the, the county transportation department would contract with.
How many different kind of third-party contractors do you have?
Just the, just this, this group. We did the RFP last year, and the three vendors were selected for, uh, uh, three for Medicaid, non-emergency medical transportation, and three for regular transportation.
What kind of decisions does, does this transfer, Transportation Advisory Board do? I mean, what, I don't know, did I know what it actually does, so.
They basically advise myself and the staff on different programs and policies that we're looking at. They're, they're kind of the first review of any, anything we're doing. Major changes, of course, would come to this board for approval and implementation. For example, these requirements for the TAB board are, are in the new bylaws and a Transportation Advisory Board manual that will be coming before this group probably in December, even late November or December for approval.
Is that the bylaws the state comes up with, or is that the bylaws that the Transportation Advisory Board comes up with?
It, it's a template produced by the state that we're judged by. So, we took the template and modified it for, for our agency.
Okay.
And then County Attorney's Office has looked at the bylaws.
I'm gonna go ahead and go back to my concern. I'm concerned that you have a, a transport, somebody that's actually contracting with the county.
Right.
Sitting on this Transportation Advisory Board that, in some capacity, would have some, I know you're saying he can sustain from his vote, but still, you know, he's gonna have some presence there at that meeting, so I don't think that's good.
That's one of the options, is, you know, we don't necessarily have to have that. It's just in that particular category, that's one of the options.
And then the second thing, I'm not clear if he's from Davidson County or not. And third, I know the other one's not from, from Brown Summit, so.
You have a need.
Like I say, do we go out for advertisement for these people on the, do we let people know, like citizens of the community that would?
Andrew, Andrew Edmonds works for High Point.
Yes, he, yes. Mr. Edmonds, um, he, he would, we are required to have MPO representation. Um, he also was concerned about potential conflicts because he's a, the MPO's a source of funds for us.
All right.
But the, the MPOs are in one of those categories that we have to fill spots. We also have a, a request out to the Winston Salem MPO if they wanted to have a representative on the Transportation Advisory Board.
Well, you have commissioners here that sit on the MPOs, so.
Right.
You can have one of them on there, not somebody from Brown Summit.
Well, yeah, but these are staff, but you're right. They're, they're MPO staff, not, not elected officials.
Oh, oh.
Mr. Stevens is the one that owns Providence Transportation, and he's the one that lives in Brown Summit.
Okay, that's all the questions.
So, you know, we all vote, decide to vote, it's fine.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I know how I do, so.
I remember when we got these, I sent an email to Debbie with concerns, and she mentioned about, they, they tried to get them in certain classifications. That was a concern of mine from day one. I can't believe, you know, that we're having to go that far out of Davidson County to get people on, on this.
Yeah, but we've canceled the last, let's see, two Parks and Rec meetings within the last couple of months. We've had to cancel because of lack of quorum, so sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do, and if the guy's already going there, I don't like it either. I want Davidson County citizens. Kind of a catch twenty-two.
We've actually moved into a bigger room at the Health Department. We're in their educational room meeting now because of the size of the group.
Is there a timeline for, for these appointments?
No, sir, not really. We can, you have a leisure appointment whenever y'all decide. They would serve a two-year term, and then some could apply for another term.
And the position we're talking about or decisions, that's gonna be made for the, for the Davidson County Transportation group?
Yes.
Okay.
Mainland's an advisory board, though.
Okay.
Primarily.
I think, uh, maybe somebody could direct me differently, but I think maybe we would need to table this. And it's come back with a couple of people from Davidson County with business interest in Davidson County that has invested interest here. I, I'm fine with that.
I'm good with her, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's like a.
Would, would the fact of the one having business in Davidson County, I mean, it looks like he would have vested interests.
Hey, to me, it looks like it's.
That's what he was saying down there, that it, if you do it with anybody, that any third party that's operating is gonna have the same conflict. That's what he's saying. But you don't have to have the third party. That's just one of a group. So, you could get another slot in that. I don't know what, what they are, but you could get another one besides that.
That's, that's.
If so, yes, sir.
Uh, uh, is the board, what's the board's feelings about approving the one, the Workshop of Davidson County, unless, so, see if we can come back with somebody.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Right, we have a motion, Commissioner McClure. Second by Commissioner McCroft. Cast your vote.
Maybe the dispatch can do an article and ask, uh.
You understand, that's, is the motion clear, madam?
Some citizens to.
Just on that one person?
They being interested.
Okay, thank you.
In serving. They can go online, right, Debbie? They can go online and fill out these, uh, applications.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman, point of clarification. If the one position has to be a staff person from an MPO, you'd have to find somebody with an MPO that lived in Davidson County. That, that may be hard to do.
It's not an elected official.
Right. It's an MPO staff member.
Uh, isn't Scott, uh, isn't Scott, uh?
Guy knows them all, he can tell you.
Guy?
Guy probably is, Guy is, too.
I'm, I'm chair of that steering committee, but.
You'd probably make some good recommendations in Guy.
But I, I'm thinking of, of Michael Nun. I don't know if you know Mike Nun or not, but he, he, he has a private consulting firm, but he manages the Burlington Alamance. And then you also have Phil Conrad, and he serves as the Transportation Administrator for Rowan County, uh, MPO, and I think he may live in Davidson County. I know his parents live in Pilgrim's Church Community, but, uh.
Well, how many from MPOs do we have to have?
Just one.
He's just one staff person. Given a pool to pick from.
I'm just trying to tell you, other folks that live in the county that are MPO.
But we've, we've got, what, one or two on there now, an MPO, haven't we?
Uh, we have, uh, one, uh, Andrew Edmonds is, is coming as, as.
Is Grimes on the MPO?
Well, he is the chairman of TAC.
Okay. But he's elected.
But he's not a staff person. He's, he's an elected official.
So, is these bylaws, they mandated, uh, I guess this question is for Commissioner Truul. You serve on this committee. These bylaws, the bylaws that they're talking about now, is that something that's, y'all discussed in the Transportation Advisory Board meeting? Is that something?
Well, I missed a couple of meetings, I think. I, I, I don't remember.
That's what happens when you live local here, you miss them.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, under the, the bylaws of the, of this committee, the commissioner specifically approved under qualifications certain categories of membership and said, in order to create a diverse board membership, the Davidson County Transportation Advisory Board shall be composed of individuals drawn from public human service agencies, transportation providers, the public and business sector, government and government affiliates, and at least two individuals drawn from the community reflecting consuming populations. And I think what Mr. Jones was saying is that, separate and apart from what the bylaws require, the bylaws specifically would require a transportation provider that they are receiving direction as to categories.
Right.
That are to be provided. Your point about conflict is well-taken, and so what it requires is, if you're gonna fill that seat, you're gonna have to have an individual, or at least a chairman, who's sensitive to the potential of a conflict, and that person stepping aside when an issue which would be a conflict.
Well, they had to just get somebody else in the transportation business that's not contracted with the county.
This is more and more common among the advisory boards that this Board of Commissioners appoints. I have been working in the last couple of days about the Committee on Aging, and it also requires certain individuals and individuals who may have a conflict to, to serve as voting members of that committee. And so, we beefed up the language in the bylaws for that committee to speak specifically as to what a conflict of interest looks like.
So, is there a new set of bylaws coming? That's what I heard just a few minutes ago.
Yes, sir. The, the new bylaws in the Transportation Advisory Board manual has been delivered to the, to the TAB board members at our last meeting, which was last Thursday. In November, we'll have a thorough review of that and ask them to approve it. And then this, your second meeting in November is when we'll hopefully be on the agenda to present it, the bylaws, to, to this board for approval and implementation.
Okay. Okay, you got the vote, Deb? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you, sir. Uh, items for decision information deliberation request by Davidson County Schools for emergency HVAC needs. Deb will lead this off.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Over the last couple of weeks, me and my staff have met, the, the school staff, superintendent, her staff. With the hot weather coming on at, at the first of the year, they have several air-conditioning units that are not, that are in need of repair and are broken. We took the liberty, uh, we sent our HVAC expert, Mr. Randy Mitchell, out with Mr. Ty Singer and the staff to look at each one of these units to make, to, to see how bad they were. And according to Randy, he says, you know, they're in dire need of repair. They need to be fixed. The one at North Davidson is, is probably the worst. And so, uh, these units have a little bit of age on them. Some of them are nineteen seventy-three models, nineteen seventy-four models, nineteen seventy-five models. And so, uh, this is not one of those things that we just can't do. We've gotta fix them. And so, the, the estimates, and these are rough estimates based off some prior numbers that they paid for other heating and air units. The, the rough estimate is a million two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. Now, you know, my good colleague, Mr. Smith, not here, but we had talked about this, you know. You know, our responsibility is the capital needs of the schools, the planned assets, that we're, we're required to fix them. You know, where, where would the money come from? We, we thought about, you know, in case you did the budget, he told you that there was about nine hundred fifty-one thousand that we're gonna put in the Economic Development Fund for the park to, in case some of the budget numbers went over. Well, as you remember, a couple of meetings ago, Edgar has now approved and is gonna purchase the land. So, we're gonna get all that cash up front instead of them leasing it over the next five to fifteen years. So, with that influx of cash, you know, we, we can, if we got some overages, that's what, we should be able to carry it. So, staff suggestion is that the board wants to move forward is we would use that money to, to help make these repairs. Now, this is not need, this is gotta fix. So, and I, and like I say, Dr. Light, the school, some of their school board is here. Jay Temple's here. He's been heavily involved. Chris Johnson's here. Mr. Ty Singer's here. And so, I mean, if you've got some questions, all, between all of us, we'll be glad to answer your questions.
If you, you, we're looking at, if we fixed everything tomorrow, this is what it would cost us, right? Okay, what's the timeline as far as, uh, what's, what, what's not working, what's working poorly, and what's working okay, but it's due to go down any time? How's that?
But the top five are the ones that, that's probably not working. That list down at the bottom is things that's imminent and maybe in the next one to two years could need repair. But these, these items right here are the ones that desperately need repair.
Uh, I got a question for Mr. Temple, if you can. I see the Central Davidson Middle School cooling tower is down at the bottom of the list, uh, but there's. Uh, but there's not an age on it, but it says that it's been rebuilt once. Do you know the age of that, that unit?
Um. No. Oh, wow.
The reason I ask is because it should be from nineteen nineties, and then you've got it on the list, uh, with a cost, but then you've got stuff from, that's fifty-two years old that doesn't have a cost, that's why I was asking.
I was principal at Central Davidson, Chris Johnston, I was principal there from oh-four to oh-eight. And, uh, I'm sorry, oh-eight to twelve, and during that time, that was rebuilt while I was there, that cooling tower.
Okay.
Our, uh, our consultants, I contacted them, and, uh, our consultants are telling us that the, the useful life of a cooling tower is fifteen to twenty years. And I think we have three of them that are on that list, one of them I know goes to seventy-three. Uh, the one at Ledford was, is actually a culmination. When we replaced another, the base was from seventy-three, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm doing this out of my head, so don't, don't hold me to this. But the, the cooling tower at Ledford had been replaced by taking a piece from another school when we replaced one. The bottom is a seventy-three model and the top was, I believe, a ninety-something model. So, uh, the maintenance staff has done a tremendous job keeping these things running. And, uh, when we loaded these buildings to start school with, you know, eighteen thousand kids, and then we turned the air conditioner on, they went crazy because we are in a energy management program over the summer, we don't run them full speed. Like we, and like I said, you know, it's unfortunate, but it happened and, uh, but, uh, you know, Chris had the answer to your question.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because like I said, I see that cost on there, and that cost is not calculated into the one point two, two million dollar range, is that correct, Zeb?
Right, that, that's, uh, that's, it's running, but.
Right.
Few years, it's probably gonna be one that they'll be, they'll say that has to be replaced or repaired.
Right.
See, Zeb, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the, the, if we, the funds are allocated and being paid out per completion of the job, we, we run check out, pay it out?
Yeah, normally how the function is that they'll, if you approve the money, they will set up, we will set up capital projects on our books. Now, I'm getting like an accountant again, and they'll set up capital projects on theirs.
Okay.
And it'll be set up for these amounts, and they'll start working on that project. Now, when they get to the end of the project, if there's funds left over, they can't spend them on anything else unless they come back to the board and get them re-appropriated somewhere else.
So this, this mon, this, this money, these monies will be designated for these, these top projects, okay?
Right, but wasn't, wasn't y'all going back and looking at projects that have been completed to see if there's any overages that we can allocate, reallocate?
Just so you know, Zeb actually explained how we have been able to maintain without coming back to y'all over the years. Uh, the overages, but again, once that money is in a project, we can't do anything without your approval. So the monies that we have had from projects in the past is what's kept these units going. Uh, so to answer your question, yes, there has been money. We, Chris and I sat down the other day, there are a few projects that we've looked at, we talked to Zeb. But again, without, if we close those projects out, those overages, then we may be coming back to y'all every month. So in other words, we've maintained, I think Zeb would, would tell you, am I making sense of how, how it's done?
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, I, I understand that concept, but I don't understand the part about having to come back because if we say we're gonna fix that heating system, then you shouldn't have to work on it for a while.
Okay, right, but if, if we close all those projects out and an emergency came up.
Mm-hmm.
Then we would have to come back to you immediately. That's, and, and there's not that much out there, Mr. McCroft, I can tell you, because, uh, the past administration, Dr. Mara basically instructed when Conrad and Travis Smith to, to do exactly what you're asking. And so, um, when I was back in, on the job, there was a whole lot more money out there than there is now. And, uh, because that was the first thing I told Chris, well, here's what we need to do. That was always the emergency fund.
And I thought Zeb just said you couldn't spend that money on any other project.
Well, y'all, yeah, but when it does, it comes to y'all, y'all approve.
Yeah, we have to do a budget amendment back to y'all, and y'all have to approve it.
Have to do, they have to do a budget amendment, y'all have approved.
Well, I've, I've seen those, yeah.
Yeah.
But I hadn't seen them. I hadn't, I didn't, I hadn't sent any budget amendments to, to fix a HVAC system.
Well, that's kinda what Jay's saying, that they've already, early on during Dr. Mara's tenure, skinnyed that down, so they've not come back like in the past with, I know they had one back in the spring for Central Middle Roof where they combined a bunch of projects to end up fixing that roof, is that?
That, that's correct, yeah, because with the money that you allocated in capital, in category one, didn't cover the cost when the bid came in.
Right.
So they had to compress and go back and do that. Uh, and like I said, I'm telling you, there is a whole lot less money in open projects, there's, there's really not that much.
Okay.
What's, what's the procedure for contracting out that work?
In an emergency situation, which is what's going on at North Davidson right now, that you get somebody to go in there. Just so you'll know, we've installed an emergency, uh, cooling tower up there, it's operating. It had to be installed at a cost of fourteen thousand dollars and it's nine thousand dollars a month. So it, North Davidson is down and we're on temporary cooling up there.
I've got a question. In a situation like this, if we approve the funds tonight, um, how many commercial HVAC supply houses y'all usually reach out to to get prices from?
We've already reached out to two because the lead time to fix some of these things, we've been told, is six to eight weeks. We can't, we may not be able to, what, if the, if it goes down at East Davidson, we lose heat. And East Davidson, when Randy came back to us and Randy said, that thing's having a high-speed wobble right now, and that's, that's not a, that is a term. He, Randy's term was it's spitting, I believe he said it's spitting, uh, fan blades. Um, but to answer your question, we've already reached out to two. And, uh, like I said, in an emergency situation, you get whoever can get it done. But, uh, we, we, we gotta put bids out there and we gotta get going if.
Now, this is to repair, not replace, is that correct?
Some of these are repairs, some are replaced.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, one last question, it'd actually be towards, uh, the chairman of y'all's board and Dr., uh, Dr. Light. Uh, Alan Beck and Dr. Light. I keep hearing, uh, uh, Dr. Morrow come up, and I know that y'all's fund balances dramatically went down. And I also understand that at some point y'all had had a vote to allow the superintendent to have discretion over certain things. Have y'all got that checks and balances back under control now, and I, because I, I think you're great and I trust you, but as public funds and seeing that money go down, I wanna make sure and verify on public record that that stuff has been taken care of and is under control now.
Yeah, there's a lot more checks and balances, mainly the checks and balances are coming now through transparency. You know, even though she still has the right to do a lot of the stuff that we're doing, that we voted on, that we allow her to do, now she comes directly with us, with that. Even if it's a lower amount than she has to, she still comes to us. And that all came down for a simple reason being is what we went through before. Now, the situation that we went through before, you know, we didn't even know a lot of that stuff. And part of the problem was, and what we're, another check that we're doing right now is that when we took votes on different contracts of money and for a year to two years on different curriculum projects, is that we weren't told where the money came from. And a lot of the money that was coming from, we would assume was coming from pots of money for these things, you know, different things that already had the revenue set up, but it wasn't.
Right.
So another thing that we require now and that we insist on is when one of our, uh, people come up and ask for money, one of the first questions we ask, now they're getting used to telling us, is where does this money come from?
Gotcha.
Is it already coming from inside the current budget, is this coming from the balance, where does it come from? But the transparency that we come in and, and, and Dr. Life is totally on board with that, she has insisted on that pretty much, and the board hasn't insisted on, but we are now having to make sure transparency where the money's coming from. If, uh, the contracts we're getting into are single year, double year, triple year, you know, how long are these contracts were in? Because sometimes if you get into a curriculum project and you find out it just doesn't work for your system, although it might work for other systems, doesn't work in Davidson County.
Mm-hmm.
Everything that works for Guilford County, Mecklenburg County, may not work here. It may be the greatest thing since peanut butter, but it doesn't work here, and we wanna try to get out of it. So now we're looking at different contracts that we get into to try to make sure we do it for single year contracts.
And by the way, Dr. Light, I think you're doing great. Uh, I know you got handed, uh, quite a, quite a big thing to take on, and I think you're doing wonderful. I've talked to several of your board members, um, and I commend you for that. So I just wanted to make sure we're.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. I have an incredible team and tremendous support from the board, so I do appreciate that, and I appreciate your support.
Absolutely, thank you.
I will say the same thing for Dr. Life, is the fact that she's on board with everything we're doing, but she's also on board with Davidson County school kids. So I mean, everything that she's doing is what we represent also, so if she's doing anything wrong, she, she's still got us. Because what she's doing and what she's proven to us, she has not truly got to be the superintendent.
Oh, no, she's been going and fixing stuff.
Is going on fixing everything, putting out little fires, and us trying to get on board with all of our personnel as far as pay scales, fairness and all that, so we're so busy into that right now. I know she would be glad to finally slow down and get to just be superintendent, but we do appreciate, and we hope y'all do too. But we also thank you for your time because, along with the ma, our maintenance group, I have been on the board for a little while now, and I have got to see them working on some of these units. And I have seen them go inside the units and about cry at what they see. They're going in to fix some little small thing, and it's something big.
Mm-hmm.
But you know, something different about these rural maintenance men compared to your urban maintenance men, they know how to do things.
Mm-hmm.
They grew up doing things, and that's the kind of maintenance men we have. I appreciate them a lot, they're doing a good job. But they finally come to a time also when they're juggling things and they know when to give up and when things get dangerous. And we're kinda at that point on several of our units now, but we appreciate y'all looking at that for us.
Duck tape, best invention to man. Commissioner Jarvis?
Got, got one question for Mr. Beck. What, what currently is your policy for the expenditure of the superintendent? Uh, what's that threshold without coming to the board?
Is that twenty-five thousand right now?
Twenty-five thousand.
And, and even at that, I would say previous administration just, we, we didn't know some of this stuff. But with, with her, if she comes up with something even at ten thousand dollars, she still comes to us. And, and we, we demand that, but we don't have to with Dr. Light. Uh, each board member that we have right now, we understand and we, we insist on transparency now because I wanna know where the money's going. Each board member wants to know where the money is going. So we demand that, but we don't have to because it's there.
We don't, we don't demand it. I think Zeb's is a thousand dollars, but he comes to us whether it's a thousand or what it is.
Uh, I think the CFO's got.
I just wanted to jump in, part of what Mr. Beck and Dr. Light have said, we've actually put in place a finance committee, and, um, we, uh, review encumbrances and, uh, disperse them on a monthly basis with the chair and the vice chair. So, um, may, maybe twenty-five thousand, but they're on a recurring basis looking at items much lower, and, uh, we, we perform that on a, a monthly basis, so they can review.
Seems like I remember a year or so back, the school board approved a hundred thousand dollar spending limit for the, uh, not for you, Dr. Light, but, uh. But I could've swore I read that in the paper like two years ago, and I was thinking, that's, that's a lot of money to. Fifty, okay.
And so y'all dropped it back to twenty-five? Okay. And, and thank you for clarifying that, and, and thank you and, and all of Davidson County, uh, teachers and staff, uh, 'cause y'all do a great job.
And, and I do just wanna take this opportunity to commend our administrators, our teachers and our students because in several schools, like Zeb's pointed out, they have been really hot since day one. Um, and as we've visited schools, you know, our maintenance folks are there working as hard as they can, and I've, I've complimented the principals because again, there are fans going, and we're just trying to do the best we can do. And I just attribute it to their leadership that we haven't received more calls than we have complaining, uh, because they know we're doing all that we can do, and they, they know that we're asking for your support, so.
Right.
Okay.
I just have a question for Jay. This is gonna be more of a technical question with, uh, with, uh, do y'all use a mechanical engineer to go out and look at this and maybe, I don't know a whole lot about chillers, maybe Mr. Jarvis does down there, but that's not one of my expertises. Um, do y'all use like a mechanical engineer to go out and look at this, uh, this unit and tell you what's the, the newest thing on the market, maybe the most energy efficient, um?
That's a great question because there, our engineering firm is called CES.
CES, okay.
Uh, it's, um, and we use them, we've used them in the design process for the schools that we built. They're very good, they're well-respected, uh, I placed a call to them, believe it or not. They went all the way back, they had, when we built Ledford High School in nineteen seventy-four, they still had all the records. And when I contacted them, uh, Friday, no, it was yesterday, excuse me, yesterday, they got on it and they know what's in our schools, they have been there, uh, and that was one of the questions that they, you know, that, that they have to answer. What, what is the most efficient? In fact, they've already recommended that rather than replacing one large unit, we replace it with two smalls. Uh, so things like that, they're already working to see what is going to be the most cost-effective and what's gonna be the best for the school.
All right, I mean, I'm sure technology's changed in fifty years, so you wanna, you know, we had some.
He pointed out something to me the other day, as we would sit down and tried to figure this out, that some of the compressors companies that, of some of the equipment that we have are now gone out of business. And we're, we're kind of afraid that we may run into something because compressors used to be, you know, short and fat, and now they're tall and skinny, so are they gonna go in our cabinets, or are they gonna fit in some of the places?
And that's why I'm saying you need that engineer to.
We do have one, and again, it's CES, Consulting Engineering Services is what they're.
And you know, it kinda scares me a little bit that you say it's an emergency and you can't really put it out for bid, or there's not somebody looking over.
North Davidson is the only one that's an emergency.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 'cause we're, we are gonna put it out in a bid, and like I say, uh, you know, Randy, some of the small stuff, Randy said, uh, he brought in one of the people that work on some of y'all's stuff. Uh, and I, I wanna, and I complimented Randy at least three times and appreciate what he did because had we not had him to go out, it would, it could look a little fishy that we're standing up here trying to talk to you. And, uh, I'll be honest, that, that was my first thought that, uh, but, uh.
I mean, it don't look fishy to me, this thing's nineteen seventy-three, so I mean, we've got our life out of it, I would, would guess.
Actually, the, the guy at CES told me that BAC, which is a manufacturer and a cooling tower, said that we need to put one of ours in their Hall of Fame, so.
I just wanna make sure we get one as good as what we had, you know? When we get back in there.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Don.
I wanted to ask Jay one question, we're talking about technology. You know, some of the schools has got, uh, uh, wall units, and some's got, uh, different type units. When you go to technology, do you still try to replace a wall unit, or do you try to replace it with a something later, or what do you do?
See, that's a, that's one of our major issues also, because we have some through-the-wall units that, and Randy and Joe, and y'all, Joe had hernia surgery this morning, and he's here tonight, so, uh, but we have some through-the-wall units that when you pull them out, the pans that they're in there are so rusted, they'll hit the floor. And you can't do anything at that point with them, and I'm, believe me, I'm not an HVAC guy, but I'm just repeating what they said. Uh, so the technology, I assume, is there, that would be a Randy Mitchell and a Joe Ty singer question because we can't just go in and repipe and replumb an entire school, 'cause that would be way cost prohibitive. And, uh, so something has got to go back in those same holes.
Right, but you are looking at options to see what would work best.
We're gonna, I think you guys know that, you know, we have, we've done this, we, as Dr. Mock used to put it, you know, baling wire and ingenuity has gotten us a long way, and it's saved this county a lot of money, uh, over the years doing these things. And we can't just, we're not going to just jump into something. We're going to actually look to see what's the best, what's the most cost, uh, you know, efficient, and we're gonna do you a good job.
Okay. And you've learned a lot from Dr. Mock, I think.
He still burns my ears up, guys, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, it says, you wanna say something else?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I have spoken to one of the HVAC guys that was out there on site to probably four or five.
of the different units and there are some definite needs immediate. Well, know that, you know, north is, as you stated, you need it right away. Um, and the others, you will, you will put them out the bid based on the need from the top cri- criteria down. Would that be correct?
Yeah. Um, in fact, what Zeb and I had talked about was to, to put them out there in order of priority. And as we finish one project, as, as we budget for the first project, as we finish that project, take the leftovers like Mr. Crotz was saying, move it to the second project and just keep moving and, and going forward like that.
Okay. Would, would it be appropriate if we would, since we're looking at budget numbers, if we would appropriate one million dollars based on this and see where we end up?
I think that would be, uh, that would be a great idea as far as, I mean, obviously we would take whatever you, we're gonna take whatever you give us. Uh, if we can put that out there and, uh, when we get to the end of that line, if we're not through with this list, because we don't know, I mean, you know, these-
These prices that you could have one jump back and forth, I understand.
Like when I spoke to the, uh, the principal at CES the other day, first thing he said is, are you gonna have, need new controls? Are you gonna need new piping? Are you gonna need new wiring? We don't know. And you know, you-
Until you get into it sometimes.
You know that and you're not gonna, you're not gonna know that until you get into it.
So is that what he's gonna come out and look at to make sure? That's what I'm saying. You don't want a contractor coming in there and telling you what you need.
Right. What we're gonna have to do is get somebody, like you say, and, and again, we use CES to come in there, develop the RFPs and then put them out there for bid.
Right. That's what you need to do.
Yes.
Uh, and, and I think we need to get you some money, but I don't wanna do the one million. I'd like to do, go ahead and get the, the other one down there and do one point four three one. As well, if you add them both together. You add the two hundred and eight thousand on the bottom list. No, it's one point two on the top, but if you add the two hundred and eight thousand on the other one, it comes to one point four three one.
But Central Middle was, was re- rebuilt already.
In two thousand and five?
Yeah.
But they say, they're saying that it's gonna, it, it has been, but it's gonna go down in the next year or two, right?
No, I hadn't heard that.
That's what I heard a little while ago.
I mean, that looks like that one's further down the list. I guess y'all-
It is.
Kindly in the list of the needs and-
Hey guys, I'm still telling you, the, the way that this works, we could never go past that without y'all's approval anyway. So it's, you know, it's just, they're really, because they have water source heat pumps, their real life, uh, of those things are the cooling towers and those things are beyond repair. They put lipstick on a pig too long for that stuff. It's, it's rusted out. One, at East Davidson, you could go with shaft bearings and blower wheels. It's not rusted out. But the, uh, the rest of them are just-
Central Davidson right now, Randy, is what we own. I mean, I think we're good with the other-
The Central Middle Cooling Towers, that's what you're saying?
Yeah. Did you look at that one?
I didn't even look at Central Tower.
Is this a priority list? I mean-
Well, the top, the top is the ones that, that they-
Yeah, they're wanting those immediately. And then that, they're saying, I heard a while ago that that one's gonna be in the next year.
I saw it and heard it, but I just weren't a part of it too.
The rest are pending, but, uh-
The real bad tower is at Northwest Elementary.
Yeah.
That's, that's the real bad. East Davidson right now is throwing fan blades and every time it does, it shakes a little bit worse. And I can see it self-destructing within a, you know, within a few weeks if something's not done there.
We'll be able to get it done in a few weeks for sure, but-
No, it's time to get the process going.
Right, right.
Okay.
We ignored the fan blade on top of this building one time. We thought we'd make it in there.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the one point two two three, uh, millions, put it in the capital as, uh, Zeb has said and, uh, um, let y'all account for it as it comes back. Those top five or six listed there are the ones that are priority. You've, uh, we've verified that. Don't see any reason to not go ahead and approve this amount of money that you need.
I'll second that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, got a motion. Commissioner McClure, go second.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate you going out there. Thank you, Jay.
That's, that's-
And I'll include as part of that motion that, that the money come from the set aside for Eggers.
My, my, uh, my staff recommendation be the nine hundred fifty-one thousand come from the, the Egger EDC. The balance would come from our fund balance.
Okay, that would be my motion.
Ma'am, clerk, have you got that included in that?
I do.
Okay.
Thank y'all. Y'all may wanna leave now. Let's y'all on to sit around for free entertainment.
All right. Approve name for Wilcox Bridge, Fort York area guy, Chris Phelps, believe, will present this?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
You probably wanted them to sit here and watch you. I don't know.
We're here just to, uh, represent the, uh, Fort York and Wilcox Bridge Steering Committee. And at this time, we're just asking you to officially name the park down there that would include both Fort York and Wilcox and call it the Yadkin River Park.
You know, y'all need to get the recreation director up here to, he got a necktie on and everything.
Thomas?
He got a necktie on and everything.
Mr. McClure says you got a necktie on and everything. Get on up here.
You know, the only reason he wears a necktie is if he's wanting money.
And our chairman called Commissioner Trul, Commissioner, uh-
He's been a long time.
Hey, I'm weak. I told you I'm weak.
I told you I'm weak, guys.
Well, I had to ride my wife here.
Well, they missed the entertainment. Now it starts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we're asking you to name the park Yadkin River Park. It received the most votes on our, uh, voting period that went on, on, online and, uh, the ste- uh, Steering Committee recommended that we go with Yadkin River Park.
Okay. Thank Commissioner Barrett, Commissioner Crotz and myself. I think we're all present during that process and, uh, have, have we found that?
I think you, generally in situations like this, the public tends to come back to what is the simplest. And easily that's what I think got, got this name the most votes. Uh, sometimes the simplest denominator is the best.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I agree. I, I had actually, um, not voted on any of that stuff because I was gonna have to vote on it up here and I wanted to sit back and listen to what everybody else had to say for one time. I normally don't do that, but, uh, but I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
I'm a little disappointed Thomas has got a tie on and Chris doesn't, so I ain't so sure.
Can I have, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve Yadkin River Park as the new, uh, Fort York, Wilcox Bridge, uh, area.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Can a motion with Commissioner Crotz, second with Commissioner Barrett, cast your vote. Thomas and never wear another tie to a meeting.
Yeah. I hope you had a chance to look at the, uh, format of the, uh, uh, brochure there. I think Debbie was able to put that on for you to look at.
Hey, Thomas, when you come up asking for money though, you're supposed to look rough, not fancy.
Okay. Next on the, what do you mean, York Line Association County Commission Legislative Goals Process, Zeb?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You know, we, we, the last few meetings have, have compiled some goals and talked about them. Um, and I think at the la- at the informational meeting, the board discussed goals. Uh, the clerk has listed a summary of the goals that we have come up with. They are due to the association by the twenty-first of September. Um, like I say, some of them have to do with, uh, requests from the senior, uh, Tar Heel legislators, uh, some from veteran services and a couple from staff. So, um, with that being said, like I say, they're there for, for your review. Uh, the request is to approve them and send them on to the NCACC, uh, as our goals, uh, for the, the, our NCACC.
Okay, any fa- questions? All right, do I have a motion? A second? Either approve or disapprove? Got a motion, Commissioner McClure, to approve? Or I'll call you Troy.
That's all right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. Commissioner Yates, cast your vote. Okay. Next item is request to waive landfill fees for High Rock Lake Association clean sweep, Zeb?
Yes, sir. Um, had a conversation earlier, uh, about a week ago with Commissioner Yates. It seems that the High Rock Lake Association is getting ready to do a cl- clean sweep down at the lake. Uh, the Rowan County, um, folks have said that if the Davidson County folks were willing to accept the waste, they would too and waive the tipping fees for the cleanup. Um, with this being a volunteer effort, not a business or somebody gonna get any type of proceeds for this, uh, it, and with the board's stance on litter in the county, it seems like it would be a good, uh, gesture by the county if these people are willing to give their time to clean up around the lake that we accept the, the waste and waive the tipping fee.
What's the time li- period on that?
Uh, I'm not sure.
I think it's October, one date in October. I don't remember the date. Yeah, I'm sorry? Thirteenth, okay. Uh, the tonnage, I, I think from what I understand, they got a company that's gonna set like, uh, maybe eight containers out at different places, roll-off containers. And, uh, so we would take half of those eight and, and, uh, Rowan County would take the other half. So I would recommend maybe five each, no more than five for us and that would be five there. I think they're gonna get more trash out of it, I think, this year, but, um-
Five what?
Five containers. So you asking to me about tonnage, I would guess there would probably be no more than ten tons per container. So you're looking at about fifty ton. Well, it'd be hard to get ten ton in there. I mean, that would be the max that, that they'd probably put in there, um.
You say Rowan County's gonna participate on, do it on their side?
What's a dollar amount of that?
Uh, it's thirty s- four dollars a ton, thirty-four, thirty-six.
Thirty-six, thirty-six dollars a ton.
So it'd be fifty ton, be fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hundred bucks for half of it.
And this would be similar to a litter sweep?
Right.
Always for the lake. But you're talking about maximum tonnage there. You're talking about full containers.
And I don't think they'll ever touch ten ton. It'll probably be more, more like five, but he's gonna use forty yard containers out here. So it'll be a minimal amount of money.
Ten tons and it's thirty-six dollars a ton. It's three hundred and sixty dollars, so.
How much?
Yeah, but he's gonna do five containers.
So it's ten tons per container?
Well, I'm saying at the max, yeah. I mean, they asked me for an estimate there and that's the best I can do. You're probably gonna average more like five ton of container, but six maybe, but-
Um, I would like to have those numbers after they get through with it, uh, so we know how much, uh, both Rowan and Davidson did.
Charles got it.
Okay. I mean, I would just like a, an, an informational thing, just to know what they, you know, how much they got and all that, yeah. Cause I commend them for doing it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve that matter.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Crotz to approve. Do I have a second? Got a second, Commissioner McClure, cast your vote.
And that motion carries seven zero.
Okay, update on Hurricane Florence. Zeb in Alton, Alton, I know you're sitting back there and I've probably been called every name in the book for dragging you up here tonight. But I think it's important that our board have an update as to where, where we're standing on this.
Welcome back, Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
And good evening, fellow commissioners. Um, we'll just kinda fill you on a few things that we've done this week. Um, of course, my phone started ringing about eight oh one Monday morning and it ain't stopped since and that's okay. But we had internal meetings in our office yesterday on Monday, so we wanna make sure everything that we had in-house was pre- prepared to, to use in the event that we do get this storm, which it looks like we will be. So we have all our equipment at the ready, all our staff are ready and on the standby. We've had a lot of preparation. Uh, I reached out to some other partners to make sure they were doing some things. And then today, this morning, we had a meeting with all our external stakeholders. Um, this count, we had about seventy-five people in that little bitty room over there this morning. It, it was tough, but we got them all in there and some actually came in through the web. Um, that's something new we're trying, so we're gonna see how that goes where people can hit a link and, and go in through to-go meeting. But anyway, we, we just took a, around the room poll of what our municipality, municipalities has done in place. We wanna make sure if they had any needs, that if we could fill those gaps for them, we'd be more than glad to or fill them with state resources. We, um, reached out to DOT, uh, we talked to Highway Patrol, we talked to obviously all our school systems, both public and private were invited. Uh, so we wanna make sure all those were included as well. We talked to, um, our energy providers were there present as well. Um, Davidson Water came a little late, but they were there, uh, and, and Duke Energy and Electric Cities was present. Um, trying to make sure I include everybody, but everybody-
DSS and Health were there.
Yep, uh, all our departments internally, DHS or DSS and the Health Department there, cause we've had talks about sheltering. Uh, we've had some talks about a crest shelter that may be a possibility in this county at some point if the state does, so decides. And what a crest shelter is, is a coastal region evacuation shelter. So they would pin us with a county down at the coast that has a need and, and a number of folks that don't have anywhere to go and they would essentially get them here and then we would house them here.
And the state would fund that.
And, and the state would fund that back for us.
Dude, do we not already have such facility in Thomasville?
Uh, we've got a facility identified right now. We're just kinda sitting on the shelf waiting for them to let us know if they need us or not. Uh, we have identified another location if we decide we need a shelter here in Davidson County for our citizens as well. Uh, I've been in contact with both the Health Department and DSS to, to make sure they've got the staffing capabilities for that and so forth.
That'll be staff primarily through DHS and DSS.
And, and it's some assistance from the Health Department, or, or not the Health Department, but the American Red Cross always. So they'll be reaching out to help us as well.
If we use those other shelters besides the state designated shelters, will, will we have to declare a state of emergency to get reimbursed?
Yes, we will. So we have-
Our good chairman's the one goes out.
So we have a federal declaration already in place by our president. Uh, we also have a state of emergency in place by our governor that's been in place since Friday and he did that early on to allow the, um, farmers to get their crops out of the fields without any weight restrictions on their trucks. So the things would, so their crops wouldn't be swamped in the fields and have to take a loss on those as well. So we have all that in place. Um, what questions do you have for me?
Let me ask you about the, uh, state of emergency. I, I, I'm trying to find a downside of that and I can't really find a downside. But I do see an upside to it as, as availability of funds, accessibility to available funds that, that are after, in case we would have to have an emergency here that we had to deal, deal with in a quick manner. What is your feelings on that, Al?
I'll have to agree with you. Once we have a state of emergency in place, that allows us to start tracking those costs and, and get those costs reimbursed on us. And since we already have a federal declaration in place, that's gonna happen. We're gonna be reimbursed. That's already been done on the front side, so that legwork has already been taken care of. Um-
But if we're not in the game, we don't have access.
You, you're exactly right. We don't have access to that. And, and you know, over the years, a state of emergency gave that impression that we're not able to take care of ourselves. So it's maybe not the proper name, but that's the name that, that's always been identified with that. So simply the state of emergency is that it allows us to get to that funding stream, for lack of better words.
How much water are we gonna get?
Depends on who, what weatherman you watch.
I don't wanna hear that. How much water are we gonna get?
Track that they was talking about at five thirty, looked like it came in and kinda turned back down towards the Charlotte end. So that puts us on the right side of the storm, which is not the side we wanna be on. But by tomorrow, they may have a different perspective.
I saw, uh, one of the models that had us five to ten inches. Is that basically what you're looking at or more than that now or?
That's a good guess. But I mean, yeah, that's kinda their projection at this point, yes.
Yeah, kinda just talking about the information that you were getting.
Gi- gives, uh, an, an, which, how are we standing as far as first responder fuel?
As far as fuel for the county?
We, we had, I had Bill Noonan top off our tanks. Those are topped off, you know, we also have an agreement with Lexington, you know, that they do, no longer have storage tanks. So if they're- that they do, no longer have storage tanks, so if their vendor that they get gas come from goes down, they have the ability to tap into our reserves as well, with their public safety and utility trucks. Uh, the board approved that last, uh, in February.
How long would that last us, how much would the full load last us?
Uh, I would have to ask Bill on that, I'm, I'm not sure, I, I can get that answer for you.
I know he fills up every week, um, and it's a ten thousand gallon tank, and it usually, and I had it averaged at one point in time, and, and I don't remember right offhand, it was-
And he was over half a tank, he was over half a tank when I spoke to you yesterday.
Yeah, I, I know he don't go through the full load a week, so they probably about half.
That load would last us about two weeks?
Probably.
As gas and diesel?
Yes.
We run diesel too.
But we have diesel too, and they're-
Less and less, cuz you know, the ambulances now, the newer ones are gas, so we're running less and less diesel.
I think you got me.
It might, it might would last longer than that, because if you're not operating, uh, DSS vehicles going out, you're only operating like a, you know, utility-
You know, back when I, in my younger days, when I did the fuel usage, eighty percent of your fuel, the eighty-five percent of fuel, I guess, transportation buses, ambulances, and the sheriff. And once you get those guys out of the way, you, ten percent of your fuel is, is inspections, DSS, health.
Right, but what I'm saying is you wouldn't be operating buses, so that would cut down on your usage.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, we could have-
They have to use them worse.
Provide transportation to some shelters, and that's why things were like, especially for some special needs folks, I, just for instance, I, I talked to a provider today, we've been talking to several medical providers as well, and I talked to one organization that had eighteen patients here in Davidson County that are on ventilator support, and their battery life is only twelve hours, so a- at this time, the word I'm getting, there's gonna be a special needs shelter set up over in High Point, so we can get those people on that list, if they need to go there, we can provide transportation for them to get there, so that they can have that support.
We'll get adequate communication, uh, response if, if power's outages and things of that nature as far as getting our first responders where they need to be, and-
Uh, yeah, we, we, we've talked with communications today, and we make sure everything's in place, so that everything's gonna roll for our continuity, so that we can continue our, our operation and provide those essential services here for Davidson County and our citizens.
Good job, Al, I appreciate it.
You talked about, uh, ventilators, what about, uh, the, some of the seniors on oxygen? They generally don't have it-
There's a number of them as well.
Twenty-four hours.
Most of their, yeah, they have twenty-four hour support, and after that, you know, they will fill those calls and, and hope that we rely, well, what we do is we rely on those agencies, those home healthcare agencies, to make sure they're took care of, and then they're gonna contact us, us if they can. So with all the new CMS regulation, um, anybody that provides Medicare services and Medicaid services had to do a emergency preparedness plan and a continuity plan, or they have to be able to sustain those patients for a certain amount of time. That's kinda to, to, to keep from maybe having the case like they did down in Florida with the nursing homes that didn't-
Yeah, that was not a good thing.
So, so CMS is, is really stamping down on these folks and making sure there's some things in place, which is only gonna help us, because there's only so many of us, so we rely on them to reach out to us to let us know what their needs are.
So have we increased our oxygen storage at this point?
No, we don't increase our own, um, basically, these home health agencies that provide this put their vendors on notice, and then they increase their allotments there.
Okay. Would, would there be a reason in the future to look at potentially putting another fuel tank at the sheriff's office? I know they're one of the largest users, just what the county manager said, and for them having to come in and out, would it make logistical sense, as well as the fact, more fuel for backup?
We can always look at that, that, that's a good thought.
It's not a bad idea, Al, it would cut on, cut me off by something that's driving in our areas, right?
I think y'all do an excellent job, and you know, you've done a good job putting all this stuff together, and we appreciate what y'all do.
Sure, sir.
Um, just keep us up, and if you have anything of a dire emergency, call the chairman.
I'll call Zeb first, too, I've called him several times today.
You have that wrong, Commissioner McClure, he needs to call Michelle over there.
Oh.
Thank you, Alton.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else?
Moving on.
Not to have moved to adjourn.
What, 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 we're good.
Oh, hey, Zeb?
We're good, I didn't know if you wanted to ask, had any questions about declaring a state of emergency, uh-
Is that a conversation the board needs to have, or is that just something we need to-
No, you can make that.
Yeah, you can make that call, but I, just in case you wanted to talk about it.
Well, I don't see the downside, I wanna be ready.
Jesus.